I'd like to call this public hearing of the Architecture Review Board to order, please. Ms. Moore, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Gross. Ms. Le- Lebel?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Spence?
Here.
Mr. Castro?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
All right, thank you. So this is the ARB Public Hearing to begin the sessions that we're going to have throughout the year to talk about the Architecture Review Guidelines, which have been in effect since 1992, I believe it is.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, and there's been several iterations over the years, maybe five or six iterations, and I think the last time they were updated was 2012.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. See, I'm getting close. And so this is the opportunity for us as the Review Board to have discussions. We had an initial discussion last week with the City Council, and now we're going to be having our initial discussion with the public, and then we're going to be having monthly meetings between now and October to address the different sections of the Design Review Guidelines to look at more of the detail of each section. But tonight, we're here to listen to a presentation from the staff to kind of review with us and remind us what the guidelines are, and then we may have a discussion amongst ourselves, but really want to open up the hearing for public comments, and I have received some cards so far from people who would like to talk and address the guidelines, and I'm sure we'll have some more as people come in. One thing that I will ask when we do open up to the public is that we're going to give everybody five minutes to speak, so hopefully whatever comments you have, you can do within that five-minute period. We do have our official timer over here to help guide us through that, but also when you come forward, we'll ask you to come to the podium in the center to state your name and your address for the record, so I'd appreciate that. But I think at this point, I'd like to turn the program over to Erin Burke, who's the Principal Planner for the City of Williamsburg, and Ms. Burke, we'll turn it over to you.
So I'm going to give a brief overview of the Design Review Guidelines for those of you that were here at the City Council meeting last week. I apologize, you're going to get to see the presentation over again, but for those of you that weren't, we're going to go over each of the sections of the Design Review Guidelines and kind of hit the highlights of each area, and then at the end of the presentation, there'll be a schedule that will be available on the city's website as well that will identify the dates that each section will be heard and discussed at the upcoming meetings. So a little bit of background information on the Architectural Review, on the Design Review Guidelines, they were a recommendation from the 1989 Comprehensive Plan. Each successive Comp Plan has, again, recommended that we update our Design Review Guidelines. We're winding down the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, and one of the recommendations, again, in the Community Character section of that plan is to update our Design Review Guidelines, so we're just getting a little bit of a head start on them. They were incorporated into the zoning ordinance in 1991, and then in 1992, there was an Architectural Survey Report that was done of the city that was updated again in 2013, and as I mentioned, they're recommended that they, that we update the guidelines again in 2020. The guiding principle behind the Design Review Guidelines is to enhance the quality of life for all residents and visitors to the city by preserving the character and desirable aesthetic features for the community. It's the only slide I'm going to read directly to you tonight, I promise. So the city's broken up into four areas. AP1, which encompasses kind of the downtown Colonial Williamsburg area, is generally our most restrictive area. AP2 is the area just kind of on the outside of that AP1 district. AP3 incorporates three different areas in the city, including the Arts and Culture District, and then the Corridor Protection District is everything you see in green on the map, and that highlights the areas that you come into the city to. So when we have visitors and residents coming into the city, those are the areas that we see on our major corridors. Again, AP1 contains the Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area and some of the old campus of William &amp; Mary. There's also the National Register Districts for Pollard Park and Chandler Court that are incorporated in that. It goes down north, or goes down South Henry Street a little bit and incorporates some of South Nassau and England, and South England Street. In AP1, new buildings in addition should be constructed of brick and horizontal wood siding. Synthetic trim is not allowed, and we don't allow for cementitious siding in this district. Entrance doors should be made of wood, and for new construction, we allow for wood, vinyl-clad aluminum, vinyl-clad or aluminum-clad wood windows, and that's for new construction. Part of the update in 2013 was to kind of split up new construction and existing construction. I feel that that's probably going to continue in this next kind of update for the guidelines. It provides a little bit of clarification for people that are building in the city. So for existing buildings, excuse me, in AP1, wood siding and trim should be replaced with siding and trim that matches or duplicates what's there. Synthetic trim and siding, as I said, are not allowed in existing buildings, and they are not allowed for new buildings either. Existing wood windows should be retained and repaired for windows in AP1. You'll see this again in AP2. This means that if the windows are able to be repaired, and that generally includes anything from replacing panes to putting to some structural repair of the window, then they should be repaired and retained and kept in place. The guidelines go on to say that if they can't be repaired, or they should be replicated exactly as they are currently. Existing roof materials should be repaired in kind for existing construction. There is some accommodation for newer materials in AP1 for roof materials, and that was briefly discussed by Dr. Klee at the City Council meeting to accommodate for fireproofing and things like that. In AP2, it's everywhere you see an orange on this map, so this is probably our most commonly seen review district, and there are neighborhoods that surround AP1, and you'll see College Terrace, Burns Lane, Capitol Heights, West Williamsburg, and Indian Springs, and you'll note in this that not all of Burns Lane is in AP2. I think that that was done in the last guideline update. So for new construction in AP2, you'll get the introduction of cementitious siding. You're also allowed to have wood shingles if they're appropriate, and in this case, we also allow for solid synthetic trim. Doors, in this case, may be wood or fiberglass. That's the introduction of fiberglass, and again, the same type of wood, same windows are allowed, and then in AP2, we also make an allowance for high-quality synthetic windows, and this board has seen that example a couple of times recently with some solid composite windows that were done on new construction. For existing buildings, wood siding and trim, again, should be replaced in kind, must be replaced in kind, for buildings that are eligible for National Register. Wood siding and trim that are on buildings 50 years or older should be replaced with the same material. There are allowances in the guidelines for materials that are no longer available, asbestos or aluminum siding, and then synthetic trim can be considered on a case-by-case basis for existing buildings. You'll see the same language regarding wood windows in AP2 as you saw in AP1, and then the same language, again, you'll see for roofing materials. AP3 is the last of the generally residential districts that you're going to see. We do have some residential areas in the CP district, but these are primarily residential. The Arts and Culture District is a mix of commercial and residential, so the Christmas Attics and West Williamsburg Heights, and then Capitol Court and Pinecrest are AP3. The Arts and Culture District was introduced in the 2013 guideline update. At our meeting last week, we had a brief discussion about possibly breaking that out and creating its own district, so that's something that we can look at and consider in the guidelines updating, the update that we're getting ready to start on. Currently in AP3, you'll see a larger mix of siding materials, and you'll also see the incorporation of synthetic windows, again, that we saw in AP2. So for siding materials, you'll see wood siding, vinyl, aluminum, or cementitious siding and brick, and then for windows, we allow for this, for the high-quality synthetic windows. The guidelines specifically call out windows in the Arts and Culture District. If they have muttons, then they need to be on the exterior of the building. They don't all have muttons, but if they do, the guidelines say they must be on the exterior. In existing buildings in AP3, wood siding and trim must be replaced with wood siding and trim that matches or duplicates the existing material or product. If it's on a building that's 50 years or older, then it should be replaced, but that allows for a little bit of flexibility. There are allowances, again, for materials that are no longer available, and synthetic trim, again, is considered on a case-by-case basis. We have the same language, again, in AP3 for wood windows as we do in AP1 and AP2, and then for roofing materials, you'll also see the same language as the previous two sections. For the Corridor Protection District, as I mentioned in the beginning, these are areas that you'll travel coming into the city, and really, they might be some of our more important areas in the fact that these are, this is the city's first impression, and when folks come to visit us, we want to make sure that we're putting kind of our best foot forward in these areas. So for commercial, and I should mention, the Corridor Protection District chapter is broken up into a commercial and a residential section. So for the commercial section, you'll see here that major buildings should be constructed of brick. It does allow for the use of other materials, and there is some flexibility for the introduction of other high-quality products, excuse me, may be acceptable on a case-by-case basis, and this board sees those products and, in some cases, incorporates them. The development at Midtown is a good example of that. For lighting, this is the only section of the guidelines that currently discusses or addresses lighting, and I think that that's something that we're going to work on as we work on this update. We've had a number of cases that have come to us recently that address lighting in other sections of the city, and we should probably work on a separate chapter that specifically discusses that. This is also the area of the city that you're going to see our gas stations, so we have a special section in the Corridor Protection District section of the commercial area that discusses canopies and just discusses the height of the canopy and the appearance of the canopy, primarily making sure that the canopy is not the dominant structure on the For new construction, we have a little bit more freedom here. You're going to see the introduction of cellular PVC and cementitious siding and trim, and then you'll also see the introduction of cellular PVC windows, and that's something that we don't specifically call out in the other sections, and then you'll see the same language, again, for roof materials that you'll see in other sections of the city. For residential in the Corridor Protection District, and this is for existing structures, residential buildings with original wood siding and trim and windows should be retained and repaired. If replacement is required because of deterioration, the replacement should match that exactly. For buildings with synthetic material, we have the same kind of allowances that we have in AP3 for materials that are no longer available, it allows for a little bit of flexibility for the property owner in replacing those materials. And then these are kind of some universal guidelines that you'll see in every section of the, of the existing guidelines. We talk about mechanical equipment and trash facilities being screened. We talk about the material of retaining walls and where those retaining walls are located. We talk about fences, specifically calling out wood, aluminum, and wrought iron fences as permitted materials, and calling out chain link, wire, plastic, and vinyl fences as not being permitted. The guidelines allow for some flexibility for homeowners in painting. If the homeowner is selecting from the approved palette and they're using three or fewer colors, then they don't have to come to the Architectural Review Board for approval, and that allows our homeowners to do improvements and changes to their residents without having to come to see the board in the evening. And then we have site furnishing specifically called out on review by case-by-case basis, and these are benches, plantings, fire pits, those kind of things that you'll see both in commercial and residential areas. And then the, I added this to the universal guideline slide because you'll see this called out as permitted roof materials across the board in all of the districts, and so I felt like it might be better suited to be placed here in universal guidelines. The last two sections of the guidelines that provide us with some regulations are the signs section, and we specifically discuss color and illumination of signs. One of the things that this board has seen frequently is the use of trademark logo colors, and recent case law requires that those colors be approved, so I anticipate being able to craft some language that allows those kind of trademark logo colors to go on consent agenda so that the board doesn't have to discuss them every single time. And illumination, I think that the guidelines do a really good job addressing the illumination of signs, both internal and external illumination. And then in awnings, awnings, we typically see mostly in the Corridor Protection District. We see a few of them downtown in AP1, but we discuss the material, looking for a high-quality material that's not going to fade. We address the color of those awnings and whether they can be illuminated. So these are some potential changes that my notes have identified over the past few years, the potential incorporation of new materials. We have five years since our last Design Review Guideline update, so we have the opportunity to incorporate new materials now. Again, the clarification on trademarked sign colors, a discussion on existing wood siding. We had this come up with a case a few years ago where the guidelines allow wood siding to be replaced in kind, but the recognition that the wood siding that you may be purchasing today is not going to be of the same quality of the wood siding that has been on the house for the last 50 or 60 years. And then a review of colors in the Corridor Protection District, there might be an opportunity to be a little bit more liberal with our color selection in that area. And then, as I mentioned before, a discussion on lighting, and specifically talking about lighting in the downtown area and possibly lighting in residential neighborhoods. And as promised, here's our meeting schedule, and you don't all have to write these numbers down frantically. We will post them, and they'll be available on the city's website, but I wanted everybody to kind of see the timeline that we're looking at. We're right at the top of that schedule right now, having our public hearing. Next month, we'll kind of get started in AP1, and we'll kind of progress through the guidelines, hopefully being ready for an adoption, a recommendation of adoption from this board in September, heard at Planning Commission in October, and then before City Council at the November meeting. And with that, I'm all finished. I'm available if the board has any questions.
Thank you very much. I think that was very thorough, and we're at the point where we're discussing amongst ourselves, or perhaps if we do have questions of Ms. Burke, we can ask those. Anybody, anything they want to add to what the presentation brought to us before we open up the public hearing?
No.
All right. Well, hearing none, then I think this would be a good time then to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and so far, we've received three cards of speakers' cards, and again, I'll call your name, and if you'll come forward to the podium in the center and state your name and address, then we'll hear your comments. So the first citizen that we have is Charles Glazner. Mr. Glazner?
Good evening. I'm Charlie Glazner. I live at 319 South Boundary Street. A few years ago, I went through the Architectural Review Board for the house that my wife and I built. It was an 18-month ordeal, and I would suggest that as the board proceeds through this, that they pay particular attention to common sense. There have been tremendous strides made in construction products available, and I get a little concerned when words like "exactly" are being bantered about. I would ask you all to consider that when the restoration began nearly 100 years ago, those folks were putting in concrete fence posts, concrete shingles on some of these restored buildings. I think there was a reason for that. I'm not sure that there were, that concrete posts and concrete shingles were available during the timeframe in which Colonial Williamsburg is representing. So common sense needs to be at the forefront of all that is discussed. To exactly duplicate windows is going to become increasingly expensive as time goes on, and perhaps that puts an unfair burden on a lot of folks. And if one can stand in the street or the sidewalk and look at a house, and whatever window material or siding material or roofing material that the person proposes is basically representing what's there, I think that's a pretty good litmus test as opposed to going wherever and trying to find somebody to reconstruct a window that was built in 1927. So again, if I can leave you with one tiny little thought, it's common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glazner. Next, we have Chipps Hogland. Mr. Hogland?
I live at 145 Hunting Cove. I'm here to speak about the ARB Design Review Guidelines, especially materials selected within the Architectural Preservation Districts. Excuse me. The ARB policies have been a great, have been a great interest to me for more than 50 years. I moved here in 1965 and opened an architectural practice on the Duke of Gloucester Street. Hugh Rice, then the city manager, asked me to serve on the ARB before the year was out. At that time, the ARB reported to and served at the pleasure of the city manager. Over time, I served for a total of 14 years, often as chairman. Although I think we made good decisions, they were sometimes overturned. We made mistakes and mishaps, but most decisions were sound and appreciated. Now to materials, especially wood siding and wood windows. Of course, the historic area was the important folks to protect and, yes, revere. The palette, colors, scale, and authenticity drew me to Williamsburg. Being a modern architect, that might surprise you, but the people who were responsible for Colonial Williamsburg were honest, determined, and dedicated to drawing a line or boundary for what would become authentic Williamsburg in the 18th century. Unfortunately, this thesis did not always hold in future years, and I can give you some examples of this. When the restored area was being initially built in the 1930s and through the 1950s, hard pine and old-growth wood were available. That is no longer possible. Pondeday does not last very long, to which some windows in and of important newer homes have had to be replaced after 15 years. And I can cite the example of that, a house you all know very well. The buildings in the Architectural Preservation Neighborhood are worth observing because of their character and palette and because they represent a moment in the city of Williamsburg's non-colonial history. Most of the houses comprise a mixture ranging from Sears &amp; Roebuck bungalows and from the late 1930s and early 40s up to the 1960s with an interesting variety of two-story houses and ranch houses. In these neighborhoods, I would propose that there are many developed substitutes for wood. For example, PVC, cement board, and other composites are now available and last for years without much undue maintenance. These substitutes must in all cases carefully imitate the profiles, moldings, and appearance of those materials that would be replaced or replicated. A good rule of thumb allowing new materials other than wood might be as follows: if standing 10 feet away, even a practiced eye could not tell the difference. Thank you for your consideration and your service to the city.
Thank you very much. I've got one more speaker card here. If anybody who's come in since we began the meeting, if you would like to come forward and speak, we need to have you fill out a speaker card, so if you haven't done it and you want to come forward, please do so. All right, so the next speaker is Joseph Hayman, 130 Indian Springs Road.
Thank you. I appreciate your service to the city. Joseph Hayman, 130 Indian Springs Road, have been here since about 1980. Our house was built approximately 1950, and of course, maintenance is necessary on an older home, and I request that the Architectural Review process include recognizing that new materials are very significantly improved for energy efficiency, for durability, and for maintenance costs, and that those materials ought to be allowed for repairs to homes, especially windows, doors, and roofing materials, siding when necessary. To be forced to follow older materials is effectively saying we should welcome back a seven-inch black-and-white TV for our viewing pleasures. Thank you for consideration.
All right, Bruce Stewart?
My name is Bruce Stewart. I live at 128 Indian Springs Road, next to the previous speaker, and my house was built in the 40s and redesigned and aided to by Mr. Hogland in the 70s. We're in the AP2 district, I believe, for a reason that I can't fathom, given that there's no outlet, no visitors to Colonial Williamsburg venture down the street unless they're lost. Nothing there, except on the corner, can be seen from Colonial Williamsburg or the college, and that there are rental houses on the street that are in poor repair but in compliance with the regulations, so what is more important? I wonder if some of the streets in the Architectural District are in areas that do not support the purposes of the regulations and create unnecessary problems for homeowners. Nevertheless, my wife and I have complied with the requirements of the A2 district. For example, we walked down Duke of Gloucester Street and found the paint scheme of a building that we thought acceptable for our house and used that scheme to repaint our house several years ago. Now we are contemplating replacing windows to make them more environmentally sound. Now, we are contemplating replacing windows to make them more environmentally sound, reduce our heating and cooling bills, and eliminating storm windows that impair the aesthetics of the front of the house. I don't know whether we, what we are proposing will be approved or not, but the hearing is next week. In addition, our house was built in the 40s. A wing was added in the 70s in which entirely different windows and doors, that is, metal windows and doors, were used so that any semblance of uniformity has long since departed. In sum, my opinion is that some of the regulations and perhaps the district maps need rethinking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. Next, we have Debbie Keen.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Keen, and I reside at 718 Jamestown Road. I'm pretty excited to hear that the guidelines for ARB are being reviewed. We moved here twenty years ago from the Northeast. We bought a beautiful 115-year-old wood house in the AP-2 district. We are well aware of the ARB guidelines as we've transformed this old house into a bed and breakfast. We have added on two additions, and we're currently working on our third. The system was difficult for us to accept at first. Actually, we fought it to the nail, not understanding why I couldn't just switch out my old wood windows to new ones that actually went up and down without broken ropes in them. After many meetings of listening to not only our requests, but those of other residents, I now, twenty years later, I've got it. We moved to this area because we love the feel. We love the charm of the old houses, and without regulations, they may have been torn down and built up with mini mansions like they were in New York where we left. The ARB guidelines are in place for a reason, and we have seen some homes in the area which are very close to ours which don't belong there, and many of our guests that come and stay with us have mentioned it. Many of the people here move from other areas, and they want to change things. If you want to change things, stay where you are. The area here is appealing because of its character. Are there issues with the current regulations? Of course, there are. There needs to be some exceptions and changes, but changes to 115-year-old wood window to a vinyl window should never be allowed. Should we be able to change a wood window to another wood window instead of trying to repair it? I think so. Should we put a metal awning over my colonial wood door? Probably not. But could I be, could I be allowed to put a Trex deck patio behind my home in a personal gated area that no one else sees, my private yard? Maybe yes. So, decisions by the board should be based on regulations, not personal opinions. If a homeowner likes lattice under their deck, and it's not prohibited in that area, it's not the board's place to deny it because they feel it looks cheap. I think the decisions from this board should be based solely on approved guidelines and not personal interpretation. I strongly believe we need some change in the regulations, but the basis for this board should remain the same. We need to preserve the character of this beautiful town that we all moved to. I look forward to watching these discussions over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Barry Borden.
Good evening. My name is Barry Borden. I reside at 3004 South Court. I'm here tonight under the understanding you are relooking at your ARB stuff, and I have a couple gentlemen with me, as I am a general contractor, do some work in the city of Williamsburg as well, and would like to introduce to you a couple of products that I think would meet some of the standards that you're trying to meet today. And they are, you know, new and upcoming products. They've been around, they've been proven, and I think that it's something that you should consider. And those are two other gentlemen that also submitted the cards there.
Okay. John Hesch and Justin George?
Yes.
All right.
Hello, my name is John Hesch. I am the Territory Sales Manager for Simon &amp; Hatriam Windows. I live in Jacksonville, Florida, actually, so I'm definitely a transplant up here. So, I just wanted to basically show you a wood window design that's basically just came out. It's under the Extreme brand by Norandex, and it's basically, was designed to mimic a wood window. So, and obviously get all the features and performance out of a, out of a vinyl product. I do see that you guys have already approved vinyl clad wood windows, which I think everybody realizes that vinyl is on the outside. So, that's what sees on the street. Obviously, any of the aluminum products, any clad product is on the outside of the, of the unit, the exterior, not the interior. This so happens to be a completely vinyl product that's basically designed to mimic a wood window. So, and again, with all the performance features of 21st century. If you guys want to look at it after, after this, you're welcome to. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
On this product as well, it also has the muttons, as I know, alluded to earlier, that you like to see those on the exterior of the glass. This is all something that can be done on the interior of the glass at an inch and an eighth size with a defined profile. And with that, from a maintenance standpoint for a resident, it's much easier for them to be able to service the glass, be able to clean the glass, and that with those inlaid in the glass. And from a distance from the ten, you know, twenty feet, I know the gentleman spoke about ten, twenty feet away, you're going to be able to see the same profile. Unless you walk up on it, you're not going to know that it's sitting in between the glass, which makes it more maintenance-worthy for the buyer, for the purchaser, than versus it being on the outside where mold and mildew and all that gathers behind it. So, it's a constant maintenance problem where you've got to continually be able to clean it for it to look good and presentable as well. So, that's an added benefit of this type of window as well.
So, that was, we heard from Mr. Borden and from Mr. Hesch, and we have Justin George.
Hi there, I'm Justin George. I am with LP Smartside. Appreciate you having us in. What I am presenting is a siding product that would be a good alternative, fit right into that wood to cementitious siding material. As you can see, it's a treated engineered wood siding is what we call it. It takes, basically, it is strand wood, wood, aspen wood cut up into a bunch of strands that is treated with marine-grade resins, hydrophobic waxes, and the kicker is the zinc borate, which is a mold, mildew, and termite inhibitor. Every chip is coated in that before it's pressed down from about six inches to three-eighths of an inch. What that does is it creates a wood product that is impervious to the water and will not, or into moisture, and will not rot. Twenty-three years now on the market without a single claim of rot or decay, and it has a fifty-year warranty. It's called a 550 warranty. I mean, in the first five years of that fifty-year warranty are 100% materials and labor covered if something goes wrong. Sixteen-foot lengths, and it actually is an extremely durable product as well. Some of our best markets are the harshest climates. So, you think of the Upper Midwest with, with extreme freeze thaw. Smartside is the name brand up there. You think of the Outer Banks of North Carolina with, I mean, the, the harshest climate there is for a wood or any building material. It's performing there for over a decade. So, just a ton of benefits, fits into the same, same categories of the cementitious and wood siding, also has a trim line as well with the same, with the same makeup. So, something we think should be, should be considered, and we'd love to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have John RioFrio.
Good evening, John RioFrio. You nailed the pronunciation. That doesn't always happen. My address is 116 Chandler Court. We've been here at the house for about two years. Worked at the university for the last decade, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments, trying to wrap my head around the requirements and also around the efforts to revise the requirements. And I simply wanted to bring up, I think, one maybe salient point, and that is that as we consider revising, I know that the, there's a debate around the materials that should be used, and I think that some have made the argument that we should consider the additional expense to homeowners in using materials that are outdated, less efficient, harder to come by, harder to obtain, harder to install. I think the individual cost is an important issue, but I think that we haven't really stopped to think about the social cost. This is a touchy subject, but as our weather changes and as climate changes, we should be thinking very seriously about the additional expenses as a society, as a community, for increased use of energy, whether it's air conditioning in the summer or heating in the winter. And I think that the availability of products that make our homes more energy efficient, energy efficient, is a social good. And if that means putting vinyl in my window, then that's, I feel like that's a, that's not a problem. If it looks good from the street, and it makes our houses more efficient, less costly as a society, that should be something we should be able to take seriously. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bobby Hornsby.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Hornsby, Williamsburg, 2 Kensington Court, but our family home is 311 Indian Springs, where we've lived since 1954. And so, we've had a lot of experience, and I would like to applaud the board for doing a terrific job through the years in keeping Williamsburg looking terrific. I had not planned to speak, but when I hear some of the comments, I just wanted to add, I love hearing folks talk about the choices and use of new materials and what are the, but I wanted to remind everybody that I'm not sure if there's a way to put this in the revisions, and I think so far, the revisions that I've seen have been really good. But a big change to this whole situation architecturally, and I've built about sixty homes here, many very lovely colonial homes all over town, was, the big change was when the EPA and the federal government took all of the lead and the other poisonous concepts, you know, chemicals, out of the paint. And we all saw that, we still were throwing up cedar siding and building houses with, and in a few years, they were all needing to be repainted because, of course, the new environmentally-friendly paint would not hold and would not protect anything. And some people ordered boat paint from Europe to paint houses to, to sort of hold the fort. Ray Wright, the sign, of Wright Signs, and the sign painter, changed his sign guarantee from three years to one year because he couldn't get paint to hold up on his signs anymore. So, I think it's important to somehow try to fix these guidelines to make it so we don't have to use a lot of the modern-day paints, which do not protect the woods. And as Mr. Hogland said, pine is not the pine that it used to be. And I just think it's, it's really important for us to consider all these concepts when deciding what materials to allow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that's the last of the speakers' cards that I've received so far. Is anybody else here that wishes to speak? Not seeing anybody. I think we'll, we'll close the public hearing as far as comments. I think we've, we've heard some things. I want to thank the contractors who came here to bring some materials. I think, I think it was good to come here and present those materials to us. I think it would be good to come back to us when we're reviewing the particular sections that Ms. Burke outlined in our schedule that's coming up. But I think as we talk about AP-1, not so much AP-1, but maybe AP-2 and AP-3, it'd be an opportunity to come back and sort of re-review with us, and maybe we could get a little more detail about what your product offers and how we may or may not incorporate those items. But, you know, I'd like to hear more about that. And I think we'll have the opportunity for other manufacturers and contractors to do the same with other types of products. I think, you know, one of the themes that I hear too is, is it's not so much about the authenticity of the material, but it's the durability and perhaps the sustainability of the materials and energy efficiency. And I think that's something we're going to hear month after month as we have these discussions. So, we, I think we're all tuned in to, to, to those themes and want to hear more about that. With that said, Mr. Gross, you, you didn't get to hear all of the discussion, but do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, never pass up an open mic. I do apologize for being light. It was strictly my own scheduling fault, and I'll have to go back and look at the replay of this when it's available. I did want to point out that we're not some coven of wizards here making decisions. We are all appointed by city council, and by extension, we represent you. And we're rather eclectic group here of engineers, and architects, and historians, and archaeologists, and business people, and a whole bunch of things. But we are here to represent you and to do what you want with the overarching objective of retaining the historical value of Williamsburg and making it, continue to make it a good place to live.
I'm the, the most recent member of this board, and I come into this process with the idea that while we are intending to retain the character of our community, we can't lose sight that the buildings that are here are largely, in the AP-2 and AP-3 areas, residences of people that live here, and those buildings are for those people and shouldn't be, take into account their affordability, the ability of people to maintain them at low cost, and as a number of people talked about, the energy efficiency associated with those buildings. I believe one of our speakers made the comment that he didn't think anyone would be coming into his neighborhood in Indian Springs unless they got lost. I think that's probably true of a lot of AP-2 and AP-3. They're not part of a visitor's corridor, so the five-foot, ten-foot, fifteen-foot rule, does it look authentic, but also meet those ideas of affordability, sustainability, low maintenance are going to be the things that I'm looking at as we move through this process.
I am, I'm looking forward to examining more modern and new materials. I think we've really been lucky lately that we've gotten some that have, have been really good and have been definitely usable. I, I feel very much, if you ever go past my house, you'll see von Eastall over it, repairing wood. And I sympathize definitely with the state of materials. Forward to seeing what new materials we can, we also have to keep in mind that a lot of this is not aesthetics, it's preservation. That's part of our hat. And whereas we might not feel that a lot of the AP-2 district is colonial or pertains to Colonial Williamsburg, but it does pertain to Williamsburg, and part of Williamsburg's very important history is, as it grew in the 1930s and 40s. We can't lose sight that that's, you know, those are important buildings as well. I don't, I think we can, can work with our guidelines and hopefully come up with really... I don't, I think we can work with our guidelines and hopefully come up with really, or guidelines that are acceptable to folks, and hopefully we can save some money and, at the same time, continue to preserve our city.
I want to thank all the speakers who came forward. We really need your input as much as possible. One speaker in particular talked about to not make arbitrary decisions, that we need the guidelines to guide our decision-making. And I can't stress that how important that is and how much we take seriously the guidelines so that we apply the same standard to every single applicant that comes before us. So at times, that may seem like we're not applying common sense, but what we're actually doing is we're trying to be fair to every person who comes before us, that we're applying the same exact standard for every applicant. So if there are things that you all see as glaring problems with our regulations, please let us know so that this is the time that we can work on those and hopefully make them better and better reflect the community's goals as they relate to aesthetics, historic preservation, and other goals that the ARB has. Thank you.
Aside from what everyone else has said, and I agree with all that, is to combine the authenticity with manageability. It's easy to maintain a home if you don't have to paint every couple of years and replace siding, and that adds to value. And value is all important to all of you because at some point, it's your biggest asset, and you're going to have to sell it at some point.
All right, thank you. Anybody, staff, want anything else to add at this point?
I will add that we received mailing addresses for each of the districts from the tax assessor's office today, and so staff's going to prepare a postcard, and if you live in an AP district or the corridor protection district, you'll receive a postcard from the city kind of reminding you of these dates. We're also going to post them on the city's website, and the meeting schedules and agendas will be posted on the city's website as well. So if you have the opportunity or can attend one of our meetings, we'd welcome that. If not, my staff contact information will be on the city's website, and you can certainly send me an email or give me a phone call or drop by the office if you have input or new products that you'd like to share. We'd be happy to receive all of that.
And again, not to restate over and over, but we will be having these meetings. You see the schedule. You've been here tonight. You shared some of your thoughts with us, but we know that most of you are, live in one of these AP districts, and we'd love to have you come and sit across the table from us and actually review these sections with us because we really need your input. This was good tonight, but you may have more specific ideals or thoughts as we progress along. I really appreciate everybody being here tonight, and really don't think I see any other comments coming our way, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.